Yeah, I like to keep them, you know, give them tracking, just keep them, so that's, you just gotta walk up five of them. Fill up the card, cause that'll tie them down. A picture of a person feeling and a vehicle they're driving, also make sure it's your personal vehicle to get them filled up and all that kinda stuff. Nobody on?
Meeting everyone, welcome listeners and guests to this meeting of the Mount Vernon City Council. And with the call to order, I'd like to ask if there are any changes to the agenda or do we approve the agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Thank you Scott, and I'll take Paul as the second. Move the second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is communications, and anybody that's here speaking to a specific agenda item, just wait until that item comes up on the agenda. And if it's, if you're not here for a particular item, if you want to speak, you're welcome to start now, and I think we'll start with our representative Cindy Golding.
Hello.
Just name and address and hit the button.
Nobody's on anyway, so you're good. Everybody's here tonight.
Okay, good. Well, I'm Cindy Golding. I am your representative. I live up at 7,000 Tower Terrace Road, on a farm up north between Palo and Hiawatha. But I'm here because in my position, I wanna know what is going on in the small towns. And I have met with Tom and Capitol. I've met with Chris when I called a kind of a last-minute meeting because we had a bill that was going through that was going to, could negatively impact all the small communities in my district. And so, what I'm here for is to actually learn from you guys what the issues are, some of the things that maybe we need to fix or that we need to change. And I'm very aware of one, I'll tell you, the bill that we worked on was the stormwater and topsoil. Stormwater retention and the topsoil bill. And what was initially proposed was give the developers just carte blanche, basically. And understanding, seeing what has happened in my own area where there's a builder who has little regard for the community, I was very opposed to that and stopped at the first year. I am the vice chair of local government, and within that position, I had the, I had enough ability to stop the bill in '23. And it finally went through in '24 with several modifications that I insisted on. So I put an amendment on and they asked me to pull the amendment and I said no. And so, what we did is, they renamed, numbered the bill and they did a lot of things to get around my amendment. But they incorporated the things that I learned from Chris and the other Chris, it seemed like everybody was Chris, from, from the communities that were going to be adversely impacted. So, it's that kind of information I need from you guys. So there are some, there are other bills that went through, we stopped, or that were trying to go through. In local government, we stopped the library bill. That they were going to restructure how libraries were funded and put all the, you know, take away the library boards and put it back under the city councils. We stopped that because there were some small communities that were abusing things, that where the library board was abusing it. And my approach was, well, then get somebody else. Don't change the law for the entire state to fix your local problem. And that's my basic approach to think, you know, if we have, if Mount Vernon has a problem and you guys come to me, we'll try to see how we can fix the problem without changing the law for the entire state. And some things happened before I was elected that did change the law over the entire state, which I find a little problematic. And one of them was the Airbnb, that you have no control over that. Some, some other things like that that I think should be more, you have a community government, that the community should be able to decide how they wanna run some of those things. So, questions from you guys or comments you think you'd like help with?
We've got three more minutes there, so.
So, that's what I do, and I've heard a lot from the various, one of the things I'm working on is real estate tax reform. And I have laid the question for every other city council I've been to. The real estate tax reform that happened in '23 was, I'm hearing about a lot of the problems that came from that. With the cap on the eight-ten and some other, putting, putting several of the levies together. And some of the other things that, quite frankly, if you are not in city government and have not done that, it's, it's a whole different world. What they told us was, this is gonna save a lot of tax dollars for your constituents. Yeah, it saved some. It created a real headache for you guys. And so I think we need a complete overhaul of how do we fund local, county and state government? And how do we not do it by taxing people out of their homes? So, my initial thought is that we freeze assessments and allow the local citizens. So if you buy a hundred thousand dollar house and somebody else buys a hundred thousand dollar house, they just, and it's five years down the road, you both could afford your hundred thousand dollar home. This guy wants to sell, so he puts in all-new carpeting, you know, puts in fancy window treatments and puts in gold-plated faucets. And now he sells his house for a hundred and fifty. Now you are taxed at a hundred and fifty. You might not have been able to afford that new carpet and the gold-plated faucets. But you are now taxed at a hundred and fifty thousand. So we are taxing unrealized gain. So I'd like you to think about what we can do, what would, and then I think that we put, so you guys, so that you have, whatever your tax level is, that you are allowed to raise it according to either a consumer price index or a certain percentage, you know, you are allowed to raise that. But then your local community can decide if they wanna raise taxes more than that. And take the state out of it. Take the two-year assessment out of it. I have a house that was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in 2014. It is now assessed at three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. There's no difference in that house from what was in 2014, other than it's ten years older and it's assessed at three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So, that's nuts. Anyway, I need your help on what would work and what wouldn't work. What are some of the, what are some of the pitfalls that we might encounter as we look into this? The proposal that sits right now, just fear where, is that we put a three percent cap or a four percent cap, whatever, on the total tax bill. And then, all of the taxing bodies have to get together to figure out how they're gonna divide up that money. Well, I look at Mount Vernon School District, the city of Mount Vernon, Lynn County, and all the other taxing bodies that would participate in that to figure out what you do with that three percent or four percent or whatever it is. It's nuts. I think of several of the school districts that cross over county lines. You'd have to work with two different counties and different cities and I just, and, and the attitude is, well, let them figure it out. I'd be a no. A hard no, because that is an unmanageable thing that they would be applying to every taxing authority. The schools, the, every, everybody that participates in that tax bill would have to sit down in a room together. Can you imagine that? So, anyway, that's what I'm working on. So here's, here's the card.
Thank you.
Call me.
Thanks for coming.
Give me your ideas, because we will be looking at real estate taxing. It has been a promise, and I know that it will happen. I just want it to happen in the right way.
They're the right people.
No problem.
While the cards are going out, I will remind that this Thursday at the high school, Holy Arts Center. Bobby, six-thirty or seven o'clock?
The debate's at seven.
Seven, seven. There's a panel, plus our legal voters on that night. For the legal women voters, so thank you. Thank you Representative Golding. Anybody else here for a public comment about anything that's not on the agenda?
Thank you.
And we will move to.
Alright, no worries.
The second agenda, we have to be added with two legal licenses in minutes. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Is that the winner?
The conservative. Paul is our second. We gotta mark, he's closer. Move the second to approve the second agenda as presented. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. No more appearing tonight. In order to approve amendment area, I think I need to read this second reading. Ordinance nine-three twenty-two-four A, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain property located within the Stoneburg Urban Renewal Area in the city of Mount Vernon, county of Lynn, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Mount Vernon, county of Lynn, Mount Vernon Community School District, and other taxing districts to be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued to, issued or to be issued incurred in the city in connection with the Stoneburg Urban Renewal Area Base Two B parcels and Base Four parcels. And we are at the point of the second reading. I think staff has notified us that there have been no comments. One way or the other.
During that, I will move to approve ordinance nine-three twenty-two-four A as ready.
Second reading. Stephanie and Rose here. Move the second to approve the second reading on resolution nine-three twenty-two-four A. And that is a roll call vote. I believe that is yours, Lori.
Sure.
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
That ordinance is moving forward. Second ordinance, also going through a second reading. Nine-three twenty-two-four B, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain property located within the Spring Meadow Heights Urban Renewal Area in the city of Mount Vernon, county of Lynn, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Mount Vernon, county of Lynn, Mount Vernon Community School District and other taxing districts to be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Spring Meadow Heights Urban Renewal Area Base Three Parcels. And again, there were no comments received by staff on that one? And I'll be moved to approve ordinance nine-three twenty-two-four B, the second reading. I can mark as a, is there a second? Second? Okay, that's correct. I create, move the second, the second, approval of the second reading of nine-three twenty-two-four B. And if there are no further questions or comments, I think we'll take it over, turn it over to Lori.
Anderson?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes.
And that second reading passes and we'll look forward to the next item, or the next meeting having it on the agenda again for the final time. Moving to resolutions for approval. Nine-sixteen twenty-two-four A, order construction of certain public improvements, approving learning plans, fixing a date for adhering thereon, and taking bids therefore for improvements known as the Lester Burris Centric Generator Project. Remember that we put this out several months ago, and feel comfortable with the bids represented?
Mm-hmm.
And are we issuing again per architect's advice that hopefully estimators will be a little bit sharper this time?
Yeah, there's been some minor modifications to the plans that Alliant had raised. One thing they figured out is there's no ground. They'll probably have to sell the ground with the generator, so, just little headaches. But assuming that we'll get more bidders this time around. Hundred thousand of those would come from the grant, the remainder would come from local sales tax tied directly to the LBC.
I'm going to approve the resolution nine-sixteen twenty-two-four A. I think Paul is our second.
Second.
Oh, Stephanie there. Move the second, to move forward with nine-sixteen twenty-two-four A, the second iteration of this LBC generator project. And are there any questions or staff or comments? Have been down this road before, so it should be. That is a roll call vote too, so I'm always here.
Angel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That resolution is moving forward. Were the dates set or did you give it and I just didn't pay attention to?
The dates were in there.
There were.
There was a team that I would change them, but.
We're good. This, this is, the next one is the new one, nine-sixteen twenty-two-four B. Taking word, construction bid for the Bryant Road water main extension. As we develop, keep adding to the buildings out there and possible expansion in that direction. Looking to move the water main in that area. Explain anything more?
Uh, so currently, the city's water service stops at Bryant Court. This would replace a hydrant, extend and upgrade the size of the line along Bryant Road. Anticipation of future development at some point coming up to Bryant, obviously. We would move that entire system. Engineers estimate it was a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Dave Schmidt came in at eighty thousand, so we can't really go wrong. Money from this, for this project will come from the sale proceeds when we get to the point where we sell the public works site.
At the risk of looking and just give towards in the mouth, when we estimate it one thirty-five and they come in at eighty, we sure everything's in there?
We do, so, so before it comes to council, there are big quantities.
Yeah.
Go to the engineers and make sure that currently, it's been, for lack of better terms, extremely wonky in the biddings. We've had eleven bidders for some projects, we've had three bidders for others. We have the LBC generator project that is three hundred thousand dollars over, so I wasn't surprised to see we had a little, little bidder. Projects are starting to slow down. And so, they're definitely kind of, they're better hungry here.
That'll take longer.
Yeah. What, what size is the main building out there?
Uh, is it eight?
It'll be eight, and then we'll tee off with a four into the public works site.
It'll be a, it's a replacement hydrant at Bryant, a secondary hydrant. I'll say halfway down Bryant Road, almost half, and then the development ends up in South Lea.
The, the two homes, we have a house.
Could connect if they want to. We won't force them to connect as long as they're well as. Still operating, actually, so same thing with Septic, Wells and Septic's both, when we provide services out there. If they wanna hook up, that's up to them. If they don't, then we don't require them to, as long as they have an operating system, that's still going to work.
Is, and this wouldn't be yet this construction season? Well, with all that, I would move approval of the resolution nine-sixteen twenty-two-four B, awarding Bryant Road water main extension to Dave Schmidt Construction.
Thank you gentlemen. Move second to the fourth, nine-sixteen twenty-two-four B. And if there are no further comments, we're ready to get the project going. And Christian Scott's question about what happened yet this year, so that's good. If there are no further questions, I think we'll put it to vote.
Rose?
Yes.
Angel?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
And that resolution has passed. Order of completion and construction on that. Next is claims list. Motion to approve on that. Any questions, anything fall off of it, any comments?
I will move to approve the claims list as presented.
Thank you Stephanie, is there a second?
Second.
Paul. Move the second to approve the claims list for payments. It's a voice vote. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Continuing to work out of the public works area. Next item is discussion, consideration of the Bryant storage structural materials vote. Public works site, council action as needed.
So if you have an opportunity or would like an opportunity to come out to the public works site and take a look around, the salt sand storage pad is forward, so you can kinda get a glimpse of what it's all going to look like. So that pad is forward. This Bryant storage would be in between the north building of the two and where the salt sand would be stored. It says it's kind of a glorified yard, but basically it just holds the tanks and keep it. We don't necessarily like to keep it warm because of the salt, the salt water mixture. Unless that's what we need to use it, we can stay out of the weather while we're, while we're doing this. But start to finish, we're expecting it to be somewhere in that thirty-five, forty-five thousand dollar range. Adding everything up that we've done so far with the hoop structure for the salt sand storage and the concrete, this building, the thousands of dollars that public works is saving by doing a lot of the work themselves, we're still going to be well under the appraised value of what the sale of public works site would be. And we have to get the appraised value at that minimum. So, I feel pretty confident in moving forward and getting the materials in. This would be the last building, and then inside the north building is where we'll put an office break area. Have you got to the second floor?
Two more twenty-foot floors in the north building to you.
And then that, that end, that floor inside will be, but I, I would make sure to say we saved at least fifty percent. We're paying for the concrete, but these guys are putting it all down.
Well, with a thank you to Eldon and his team, I would move to approve this Bryant storage facility at the new public works site.
I'll second.
Stephanie. Move the second to move forward with the next building to go on out there, the Bryant storage structural.
And just a quick clarification, you mentioned the appraised value of the current site because those are the funds that we'll be paying.
Correct.
That is correct, okay.
I would ask Councilman Abel to give us a not to exceed forty-five thousand. That way, there's a top on this.
Not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Alright, go touch your golden. Motion.
Yes, thank you.
One other question before we have to put it to vote. How soon are we, the old site on the pool, because the sale process of that, is that this year or is that the spring?
Oh yeah, so the, the only thing that's really held the sale up is, is if you remember, if you look at all the lot lines that haven't necessarily been graded or looked at, because we own the pool site, we own Davis Park, and we own the public works site. So to complicate matters, we had to do a series of three plots of survey up there to create outlots to shift and move, minor boundary shifts. Those will be coming to you next month. Once those are approved, then I have a, excuse me, then I have a legal description that can be publicized. If, if I do it before, it's just more or less chicken scratches. I want to make sure that there's a valid legal description before we put a public hearing out there. And then people will have the opportunity to bid on that property.
There's an appetite in the public to.
Yeah, obviously, this, this whole process got started because we did, we did receive an interested party, did provide an offer, so we know at least, at a minimum, that somebody's interested in what, what at least we listed as that's not it.
Got a motion, any other questions? Got a motion on the floor to approve the Bryant storage materials quote. About to see forty-five thousand dollars. Ready to vote on that, that's a voice vote. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Third item for approval is the discussion consideration of the next Ferguson Water Works in Voice. One-one-six-one-seven-three. This is like third, fourth in that process, if I remember correctly?
I think we're up to about a half a dozen. This is thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Like I said, these meters are being stored at the public works site. Letters, I believe, will actually start going out to property owners this week to schedule time for them to come in. Now remember, this is a two-fold project. One is, and the main reason for the project is to replace the water meters. The reader, my understanding, has already been in footplace, so technology's already on, out of town. The second part of that, though, is the new federal requirement that we do lead service inspections, so.
Chris, is that explained in the letter along with sort of the schedule?
And, and again, Ferguson has done this in Solon and Hiawatha, of course, in the Cedar Rapids. So, it's a process that they're very familiar with. So, I'm excited for them to get started and if this is out of the way for us.
Well, with that, I would move approval of Ferguson Voice, zero-four-nine-one-six-one-seven-three, the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents.
Thank you Scott, is there a second? Move the second to move forward on the next Ferguson Water Works in Voice. And hearing no other comments, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Next item is discussion consideration of the Mount Vernon Community School District's homecoming fireworks display. Council, a compassion is needed. There's no one here to speak for that, but we want to leave it on the agenda.
Well, so here's, here's the issue, I guess. Number one, we don't know if Mount Vernon's planning any fireworks display at this point for homecoming. But this is your last council meeting before homecoming. So, my suggestion to you would be to approve the fireworks display pending approval from public safety. And that's really what we've done in the past. Just the inspection and then it's, it's more, it's kind of like a legal license, it's more of a pass.
Yeah, because we usually have supporting documents with the fire chief's signature on it.
Yes.
Insurance statement.
Yeah, insurance statement and the whole deal, so.
Pending those, that documents and Nate's signature on the mine. You see the latter, they have to pay first, whether it be for you to come in and take a roll call vote.
Why don't you go, just do Brad tonight, copy Nate on it and tell him that what actually we're doing, how we're doing tonight. If that's okay.
Yeah, they made it, you're doing a drone show or something.
Yeah, yeah, this is making it a good point.
What is the date?
Twenty-eighth, I think.
This is twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, that Friday?
That's twenty-seventh.
Or the Thursday?
That's when I dropped.
Are we, is it Thursday?
Well, the game will be Friday.
Our fireworks.
Thursday's a parade.
So be the twenty-sixth, right? Cause twenty-sixth is.
With the parade and everything?
Yeah, be the twenty-sixth.
I haven't seen a farm like that.
Yeah, the public.
I know the route.
Twenty-seventh is Friday.
Parade route changed.
Yeah. We heard about that.
Have you?
I have. I have nothing to do with it, but a lot of money.
Well, in hopes of having a festive Mount Vernon Community School District homecoming, I move to approve the homecoming fireworks if need be.
I'll second.
Move the second to approve if there is a request for homecoming fireworks display. For the Mount Vernon Community School District, and I'll include something about the certificate of insurance, etc. Ready to vote on that motion? If you're comfortable with voting on that motion here.
As long as we've got it pending public safety.
Yeah, and I've got that pending approval of, of the bill, yeah. And I think that probably is easier to do this way than bringing everybody in for another meeting, it's on the table. So ready to vote on the motion that's on the table. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and I will get it in a lot tonight on that. Reports to be filed, beginning with the local police reports. Thank you Chief. Like a month for accidents. Surely considering everything that's going on.
It's been a month for everything. It's been crazy lately for the, the accidents have made up and give us a little blessing on that. But did wanna let council know that one of our squad cars was struck this weekend in the parking lot of Casey's by an impaired driver, so.
By an impaired driver?
Impaired driver backed into our squad, so.
That'll ruin your day.
Luckily, it was minor damage. You probably, just the rear bumper cover will probably need some new clips and hopefully get back in and maybe a good buff job, maybe a little touch-up paint, but.
So is that a parking one on the. So, is that a parking one or not, did they do?
No, he wasn't parked, we were, yeah.
Unless he parked, parked and drove it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it would still be an offer. Have a bad day.
Yeah. That's a costly twelve feet bad.
Anything else from your report, uh, still have dogging since five arrests?
Yeah, nothing beyond that, um, it's been, been quite busy with calls and everything else, so.
Nothing yet to report on, um, hiring process, that's still a wait.
So, update, we're, we're running through final processes, um, the identified candidate is going through the final medical and, and necessary required ILA evaluations, uh, before final, uh, approval, so. Hopefully, we're, we'll have that, I hope to have that ready by next council meeting, if we can get everything in order and, and be ready to present that for approval. As we go, we, we are also working on a couple of reserve officers as well to fill in a couple of gaps, so we've got some good interest there as well, so we'll maybe bring in a crew of them again for swearing in, hopefully in the near future.
Good luck with that hiring process, didn't happen often.
No, thankfully.
A good decision there. Uh, public works reports, uh, photo right here from, uh, some, uh, downs there, um, a lot of talk is already going to happen about public works site stuff, but anything else to add?
Um, I was, I know I'm forgetting things in the, in the report that were more, uh, routine, I guess, reusable.
David's appreciation of the, the chip, asphalt chips or whatever you call it, uh, on the dirt road of Bryant Road.
It's a lot less nasty.
I think it built a roof that up a few inches too, I mean, then, then there's plenty more, plenty more chips in that pile out there.
Yeah, well, you have plenty of chips.
Continue, and that covers, and Elliot was done, and there was another place, wasn't there?
Uh, Bryant Road itself.
Well, yeah.
A little bit of the ambulance still in this one.
Ambulance, I think it, yeah.
Will there be more from Four Street?
Not the good ones. I mean, I'm welcome to give it away, but, uh, Four Street itself, uh, compared to Business Thirty, when they, so when they go through that grounding process, um, there's a different grade of asphalt that's used on highways than, say, your local streets. So typically, when the local streets start to get, that stuff comes up, and it's, it's good, I mean, and it will become dust-free, but I wouldn't mix the two. I would probably put that down first and put something else over top.
I'm very familiar with what we have there.
Yeah, I, so as of right now, because we have the space, we'll leave our side of chips, and then we'll continue to work at projects.
Anything else to add for Public Works? Read the report, check out the pictures.
So, I should say, Four Street did start, um, today, technically, they delivered the machinery at their wrong quarter quadrant. So, they got, they did go back to northwest, they delivered it to Four Street southwest.
What machine is this, your turn?
Next. Next, good. It did, uh, excite individuals on the southwest quadrant for a bit, so, um, so we got it figured out, but, um, and of course, if you have had an opportunity to drive on Business Thirty, uh, that project is moving forward.
Well, quickly.
I'm actually excited that they have spent a lot of time, I think, on Mount Vernon site trying to get that up, because we are the ones that are impacted by the detour. And then, uh, Rachi is, is here with the Glen Street extension, and of course, if you've been by, um, the CHI Codwin Development, the foundation that's in, I would expect some framing to be forthcoming, so, a lot happening.
Thanks for the cold patch on Sixth Street Northwest. What caused that?
Uh, this has been a bad year for asphalt, so, um, more rain, can't get all the tracks to seal, um, if you actually notice on Business Thirty, the other direction, little humps, if steam pockets will form, it blows it up, and as soon as they do, it kind of sinks back in. But there's a number of things, we have, you know, old infrastructure that obviously needs to be replaced, they will suck dirt, they will suck dirt, they will boil underneath, so, take your pick, go and art at the wall.
Well, thanks for addressing it.
We're out of time for Public Works. That's set up, hard copy, um, emailed this afternoon as well as hard copy on our place settings here, um, we've seen the numbers, every month, uh, LBC numbers keep going up, um.
Well, yeah, they're above what we were last year, yeah.
Matt, excuse my ignorance, uh, and, or mayor, for the first one that you list here, which is going to be the, uh, the park audit, really intrigued by that, who is your liaison for the council, or do you have one?
I don't, I don't believe I have.
I just wonder if a member of council could be a part of that evaluation, because that could bubble up into far more than, um, just an audit, but it could bubble up to recommendations and so on and so forth. And, and if, if you need a volunteer, I would volunteer to help.
We haven't historically had a liaison, and, and over the course of the last year, we, to a certain extent, kind of done away with the full subcommittee, so I encourage you as a council, uh, so, you're still a CDD, right, Stephanie?
Yeah.
Obviously, with Cornell, Park and Rec, the only two that get a little hairy is Plankings on the Commission and Board of Adjustment, just because.
They can appeal to us.
They can appeal to you, and Plankings only comes to you, so you try not to jade their conversations as objective, but the rest of them, um, they don't necessarily have statutory authority, so I would absolutely encourage, and two of you can go do those meetings and be, be involved if you'd like.
Craig, I would, you and Matt decide that, oh, okay?
Yeah, we'll talk, absolutely, we'd love it, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
That'd be nice. Let's go over to you as your, your. Your story preservation.
I have nothing to add.
What do you have? Um, it was, I don't know, good numbers, and, um, and this is, what year is this, in the far northeast field up by the Rover Track, running every day?
It's our second fall.
This is second fall, and the grass will all come in.
Oh, beautiful, yeah.
And, you know, we're working our way up there from the south too.
Yeah, yeah, things are going well, maintaining, maintaining it, uh, beyond what I expected, and, um, we had a Weinecke, uh, Weinecke turf management, I guess, or land solutions, come in and do some grubbing and all sorts of insecticides and so forth to help with that. So, it's, uh, it's been very positive, we've heard a lot of comments.
Aren't they adequate up there, or do they park like?
It's not, it's not adequate.
Have to walk across.
Yeah, but we're waiting for that development to, to occur, which will add a lot more spaces, but we're dealing with it, but the, the chips came there and improved that parking lot, so we're pleased with that, but, um, we're just stuck with the L shape right now, and that's all we can do, because that's all the land we own.
Am you okay, okay with all the traffic by there?
Yeah, I talked to, uh, Michelle on Friday and, uh, prepared her that we're ready for another season, our flag football game started Saturday, and she responded with, everything's been great, and no issues or concerns, so.
Appreciate that being a good, allowing us to, um.
That's where we used to park.
True.
They've had kids go into this system.
Anything else for parks and rec? From the full library, um, we've got a written report about that, a lot of activity going on there, um, I shared a period article from the, um, pretty much living magazine about Mount Vernon, um, hard copy of that, and how that they're owning the library. I think that covers reports. You have it already?
Oh, it's mine.
I have it. Yeah.
It was definitely spotted, I thought you got it. I thought you were in arena, you're just taking my paperwork out.
Once we get over that.
You guys need like five minutes?
Sitting hallway. No items for discussions, um, reports, next section, mayor, I guess I would add probably three things, first of all, did, uh, three revenue changes in the last few days. Um, art set, art, uh, new art center with Buck and Hannah, Chris Childers and Rebecca, I can't remember their last name. Sage, uh, location in the, uh, Elbe, in the, uh, Elbe's.
First Street.
First Street building, and who's the third one, oh, the, uh. Vinyl, vinyl implants store, um, so that was the third one, so that was their three new openings in, uh, within a week there. Uh, second thing, I was invited to speak at the Asian Fest, um, London Emchek, uh, but I got the, oh, and I've been doing that this, that, that was this Saturday. I also got invited to speak at the Latin Fusion Festival, but I got out the day of the, of the festival, so I was not, I was not there on Saturday at Newville, sorry, not representing Public Works. And, um, trip down Oskaloosa is the last thing, um, working on the continuing, um, saga of daycare, looking at, uh, a model that Oskaloosa has with the city, county, and school district, if I remember correctly, um, and that's something that Joe and Matt are thinking of putting together, and there's some people headed down there, just writing, or that to this, to Oskaloosa to. Keep the process continuing on daycare, desert here in Bubber and Los Minera, that's what I have. Um, any other council or community reports before we get to City District report? City Minister's report, Chris, you had yours, you're, you're gone soon?
Yes, um, so, a little pre-construction meeting will occur on Wednesday, and after that, we'd be able to likely get started fairly soon, I met with a couple of times now on that project, um, the goal, obviously, is to get the concrete work completed, before the snow flies, and then, um. Then there will be a question mark as far as how much will be over the winter. EZCAB Board of Directors will be Thursday to the twenty-sixth, I will probably attend that via Zoom, because I won't be in the office. Lori and I fly out to Pittsburgh Saturday morning, um, we return Wednesday, but I do not plan to come back in the office that week, um, so, nominated other staff to take that. I will be available live on, um, while I'm out of the office, but, if somebody is dressed like, too often, man names, so, um.
Right.
Uh, while I, while I have her here, and I appreciate, um, I do want to say that I do appreciate Cindy's honesty, um, a lot of times, when dealing with the state house, we don't get the information until it's too late. I would agree with you, I think the biggest problem with property taxes in Iowa has more to do with the every-two-year utilization than it's state mandated, and, um, one thing that I want to remind your colleagues through you, I guess, is that, um, keep in mind that, that half of the increase, maybe it's not fifty percent, but a significant amount of the increase comes at your behest, so. The back-to-blue clause, the changes to IFR contributions, four-eleven contributions, um, capping increases for the entire county against all taxes, sounds great, um, unless I have to increase police salaries by five percent because I have to send two new officers to the academy because the other two officers went to walkie, um, that's just, that's the world that you've created for us, which I think.
That was before I was here.
Yeah, no, I, I want to say that that's the world that's been created for us, and I think it's important to know that property taxes, uh, I think even at the League of Cities, you find that nobody's, nobody agrees that property tax system in Iowa is what it should be. We don't control the rollback, uh, we don't control, um, the mandates from the DNR, I think all you're going to end up doing is, is stopping the property tax, you're going to shift it to the enterprise funds, which we can use readily, and people are going to pour more in water and sewer and anything else that we can utilize, and that's kind of, it's just cautionary tale, um. Been twenty-five years, I still haven't seen services technically get cut, because those that are in the audience say this is the things that they want, um, but I do appreciate the candid conversations that we have and, and your availability, um, to have them, so. Get off my soapbox now, and let you fight that battle in the morning.
I think there's a League of Women's Vote, um, email address to send questions in advance, um, if you have any questions for that forum on Thursday night, I don't know if they'll get it to you or eventually, or I guess you get it that night, but, uh, there are, there's, uh, an avenue to, um, submit your questions in advance for that, for that forum, and we'll forward it to you there. Anyone else in, this is reported, questions of Chris, a lot of them, but get them out of here. Hearing no other, anything else to use in the public forum, the council business points, otherwise, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.